Good evening, everyone. This is Robert Stevenson. It is five thirty-one on the second of May. I'm going to call to order the meeting of South of Collins Granville Regional School District Committee. For the eleventh, can I get a motion to enter into the meeting?
So moved.
Okay.
Can I get a show of hands to enter into the meeting? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Sure, my phone's few. Weird dings. Can I get everybody to stand please for the public?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
Oh, I'm messing up. Can it off? Okay, so I'm not the only one that has even a remote excuse being only an American citizen for three years.
That's all right.
Everybody else has no.
You know more about our number.
Yeah, civics, maybe we could go over that. You're what? You're gonna beat me up? Okay. There we go. Let's see, opening ceremony, we got a consent agenda tonight. We have minutes from last meeting. And we have a fundraiser and we have the student, oh, for the Student Council Car Wash. Anybody got any questions on that before we get to the motion later? Okay, warrants, we've got contracts that I need everybody to sign, there's three of them, and then there's the the warrants that are in the bucket, if you guys can take care of that, that would be fantastic. Superintendent Willard, do we have any correspondence tonight?
I do not.
There we go. Public comment, we have nobody here except for us, so that's going to negate anybody's public comment. All right.
All right, you're up, man. Student Advisory Report. All righty, well, first of all, the SRS Talent Show has been canceled due to a low signup count. I think there was only like five acts. So the Powder Mill Talent Show is still on though and will take place on May fifth, the same day as our Town Show was on. I'm not sure how that got planned.
Has more talent.
I suppose they wanted me in. The SRS Connections Group presented the eighth grade classes last Friday. Lessons taught to the students was on microgrids and stereo advice. The SRS Spring Concert is next Thursday, May eleventh, and will feature performances from the SRS Band, Horse, and Rock Band. And now I need to propose Marissa's email because I still don't know anything about sports. There is a fundraiser at the baseball game Friday at Wally Park for the RD twenty-six Foundation. Students are three dollars to get in and adults are five dollars.
I'm the DJ, by the way.
All right.
All righty.
Any two just up to you.
JB is at four and varsity is at seven fifteen. And volleyball also has a game today against Belcher County.
All right, all right.
Awesome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, educational presentation, I am on. So we are at our point of the year where we do our public discussion, end of assessment for our illustrious superintendent, Willard. So over the last week or so, every, all the school committee members filled out an assessment. One of my duties is to sort of put that all together. An analysis that we can present at this meeting. I am not going to go and read everything verbatim that's on there. All of this information is going to be available to the public. Every one of you received this before the weekend, so hopefully you've got a chance to take a look at this. Superintendent has already had this, so I'm just going to really kind of go over some bullet points and some highlights of this. The superintendent had five goals this year. So goal number one, we were looking at working collaboratively with the administrators, the science of reading. Basically, in a nutshell, we feel that she did a fantastic job. We've got five that indicated that she met her goals, one exceeded the goal. We had another, the second goal, we had a professional practice goal. Again, we had, oh, sorry, we had one significant progress and the last one, there's always going to be seven here. The professional practice goal, we wanted to look about meaningful, measurable percentage of professional practice goals around using data in real time and how to use that data to support the student learning. So we had six, it indicated that she met the goal, one had exceeded it. We've got goal number three, you're going to sense a trend here. We're looking at dealing with strategic plan, core values, and mission statement, updating that as necessary. In this goal, we've got three that met and four that exceeded. The district improvement goal, number four. We were looking at the reform law, we were updating our policies. We've got a little bit more variation here and I think part of the issue with that is that it's difficult to indicate. I know I certainly put down some progress and that's just because we've only really gone through the, like, four of them. I don't think it's inaccurate, but yet what we've done has certainly been very productive and effective. So I can certainly understand why we've got one, two significant progress, three met, and one exceeded. It depends on how you define that. And then for the fifth goal, looking at really going out, and this is, I believe, I'm sure the families, this is where we went out and asked if you did your survey, or yeah, went out to the community. Right, so in there, we've got one with some progress, five that have met, and one that have exceeded. So that's really the global looks, then it kind of gets a little bit tighter where it looks at the standards. Where we go over the assessment, the evaluation for standard one. All of these, we've got, basically, everything is coming up proficient and exemplary. At the end of this standard one, and how this breaks out, guys, just so that everybody, we've got there's different sections that we're assessing, obviously. In this first one, we've got one C, we've got one D, we've got one E. And then that all goes together into an overall assessment. Sometimes these numbers look a little funky because you get one that said, that was proficient in one, exemplary in the other, and then they flip-flop. So you kind of have to put it together. As we get through a couple of these, I had to make some adjustments because in the, in the assessment section, we had a couple times where somebody put proficient. But yet in the overall rating, and there was only one rating, they put exemplary. We can't, you gotta have the same, that they're either both proficient or they're both exemplary. So what I did, just to be sort of fair, is that whatever that one was in the assessment, I moved it into the overall. But in here, we had the instructional leadership for one, we have the assessment, we have the evaluation, we have data-informed decision-making. And then we have an overall rating of three proficient, four exemplary. There are comments here, and what I did is everyone that had a a comment got pulled into this summary, so it's on there. I didn't necessarily identify who made what comment. Again, if there's somebody out there that wants to see the individual assessments that we as, as school committee members do, they can certainly request that. It's not, we're not trying to be we're not trying to hide anything here. Everything from a transparent perspective, all the comments are on there. Again, there's lots of positives here, Superintendent Willard. On to standard two, this one, we only had one section to look at, so it all kind of goes in together. So we got law, ethics, and policies. It's again, we had five proficient, two exemplary. I just, at this point, on the budget side of this, because it does come in here. Again, I do want to point out and really commend you for jumping in without any sort of hesitation to get this budget ready, prepared in as much detail as you were able to do. I commend you for bringing in Mr. Chmel into that process. I'm glad he was willing and able to do that as well. I know you and I have talked about this, that I think this was a good opportunity for you to get under the hood and see exactly where all that, all those finances were. I mean, the one thing about having Steve Presnell is that he was on top of everything and knew where every little dime was, which made it easy for you from your position to kind of, you knew what was coming, was accurate and trusting. So you didn't necessarily have to dig in as much as you certainly did this year to make sure you knew where everything was.
Correct.
So I think that was a good, it was a good learning opportunity for you. But all I think it does is it makes you a stronger leader because now you know that budget from the front to the back in a lot more detail than you certainly did two months ago.
Couldn't agree more. Well, and the other thing is, and I couldn't figure out a way to word it when I wrote her evaluation, but on multiple occasions during that crunch process, I heard her say, well, and I'm actually enjoying it. Which was really cool because, you know, like, to learn and grow and enjoy all at the same time, it's just pretty awesome.
I, I agree. I mean, test driving a car is great, but understanding how the car is built, I think is more important. Think, I think it worked out for the right reasons. You know, everything that say went down in the last five, six months, I think, you know, collectively, it's for the betterment of the district and I commends both of you for all the hard work and effort and you guys didn't quit. Thank you.
All right.
We're going to talk about the results of that a little later. You approve the budget, the one of your contract.
Holidays.
Yeah, no, all good. Anybody got anything else? Okay, so number three, again, this was just there with one section that was part of her goal, but made it real simple. We've got five proficient, two exemplary. We've got the information in here, the family and community engagement. I know we've certainly heard from Superintendent Willard how beneficial and how helpful those listening sessions were, the information that she got and is going to be able to sort of implement and integrate into our programs, I think is going to be invaluable. Again, all the comments that all the school committee members made are there. The professional culture, there were two standards that we were looking at. So we've got a commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, the overall rating, we came in at six proficient, one exemplary. Again, this was one of the ones, actually, it's we had one evaluator give an exemplary and a proficient, and same thing with another, so the overall, they had it down proficient, so that's why it's in there. Nothing, nothing needs improvement, nothing unsatisfactory.
Proficient is the benchmark, so that's why I always say, proficient is the benchmark.
Where three letters are.
Some people, as the topic, I do, I do want to muck this because I do like it, you're just shy of being exemplary. But you're leading the charge. So the one thing, and I certainly put this in my comment in this section, I know last year we talked about under this sort of realm, about the quality and timing of the communication to the parents from the district. I think we've made some great strides in that. I think that's look, it's a credit to you talking to the administrators, letting them know from our perspective what we're concerned about, working as a team, getting those notices out in a timely manner, giving the parents the information. I certainly think that there's room to grow and there's other things that we've already talked about that I think would even help that more. I think nowadays, with all the challenges and the, and the concerns that parents and everybody have out there about school districts, the more transparent that we can be, the better off we're going to be. But that's been the great, I wanted to make sure I pointed that out because I know last year I pointed out I was concerned. So I wanted to let you know that it's certainly evident, the work that put in this year, and I think we've certainly moved forward in the right direction. I do, and one of our other schools did bring this up, and I know we talked about it earlier, I certainly also would like to have the anti-defamation training that we, that teachers were exposed to. If that's something that we can set up for us, I think that would be fantastic.
I thought you mentioned that we were trying to do it as a workshop over the summer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's where I kind of put it because with everything going on at school committee this year, with all the turnover and everything else, I thought Jenny's working with them to figure out when we're going to have the school committee retreat.
Yep.
And we could do like a workshop, so.
Sounds good.
So before the school year even starts.
Yeah, I don't remember. I think that's fantastic.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we didn't, I don't think it was put in here as a, as a hey, you forgot. I think it was a, hey, look, we're still interested to try to do this. Okay, so now it goes into sort of assess the progress towards the goals and, and sometimes I think some of this is a little redundant.
Yeah, I didn't get, I felt this was different from the first set of things that we did.
Are these, is this the, because we did, I went back and looked, we did the exact same questions last year. So it's in there, it's in the assessment. It wouldn't be the first time I've ever seen a formalized assessment that was somewhat redundant.
I did one today.
Okay, so it's, the nice thing is is that what I always worry about when I see something like this on my other life is that you get completely different answers. We didn't, so that was good. So at least, at least from that end, we as a group were consistent in our evaluation of the superintendent as well.
Using while completing it.
Absolutely, yeah.
When, didn't I do this?
So I'm not going to go over any one of these, there were a couple, some progress or a couple, I mean, it's, we went all over those. Then we've got the performance on the scanner. And I just put the definitions on SASS factory, what needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. You're proficient or exemplary and all of them. And then we've got the, the end comments. I, I think it's fair to say from an assessment that the members of this school committee are extremely happy with your job performance in that role. I know we've talked about this before, but I thoroughly enjoyed our many meetings that we have in a bi-weekly, but not in a bi-weekly manner, going over the policies, going over the agenda, going over any sort of concerns that pop up. I think we certainly, as we said, we come at a lot of these in two different directions, but I am always astounded and happy how many of them we actually agree on. So it's, it's been a thoroughly enjoyable year, being in the chair role and interacting with you and it was actually very enjoyable to do this assessment. What? What's the chase? What's the chase? Chase doing a good job? You want to tell people they're doing a good job when you have. I agree. He's just, you know, just pat. Would you like to try to get hurt, let her know how you feel? Because I don't want to.
You said it already.
Okay, you did. I echo everything. My job is to assess and summarize all your.
I can have fun, you know, your expressions.
Know what it is with this, that theme everywhere.
I will say, I think.
All right, go. I'm always, you know, I.
They always make, honestly, but I'm serious when I need to be, but I think this group as a whole is pretty unique and pretty special, and I will say like.
Samptons.
Yeah, we're, we're live.
Aside from there, like, it's, you know, I read the paper and Google and
Yeah.
daily, just to kind of compare us to other parts of the state, but really the nation, and I can say I think, you know, this district is pretty unique and I don't think anybody here is afraid to, like, speak their mind and then not afraid to iron it out amongst the team, and I think that's something that moving forward, we just keep the mojo. I mean, it's, I think it's I'm proud to say I am a member of this committee and hope everybody can say.
Yeah, so you did a great job on a, on a, on a school grade. I think we probably give you a solid A.
Was that kind of kid at school?
So comments, I mean, I'm going to put the floor to you.
What a very challenging year. I appreciate the support that I've received this year from the school committee. I wouldn't have made it through this year without you as a school committee. I, there were times when you just had to trust me with blind faith. And I appreciated that and know I will always act with integrity, I will always put the school district first and tell you as much as I possibly can and know that school safety and our students are always going to be my top priority and know that when I do make a decision, even if you don't know everything behind it for the law, just know that I always go back to our core values, which is how I operated during COVID. I just kind of went back to what our core values were and based my decision-making off of that. So it has been a year. I thought COVID was tough. But I have to also say, I couldn't have made it throughout this year if I didn't have the team of administrators that I work with. We are down two administrators in the district right now. We are not top-heavy at all. Between Joe Chmel stepping into this role when I needed him, Serena Shorter stepping into Woodlands and then at the regional school, Erin Carrier, not only being the principal here, but taking on the educational leadership over at Woodland School, Robin Gunn, both being the director of special ed and running the day-to-day at Woodland School, plus Lisa Busquet and Jessica Cody, who really held the business department together during the transition. They were very much behind the scenes, but I have to tell you, they are exemplary and the stuff that the public doesn't see, the stuff that the teachers don't see. The fact that Lisa, when they had to do the five-week, that she was doing the retro for the teacher's contract, she was here to eight o'clock on a Friday night by herself and then worked all day on Saturday to make sure that the teacher's pay was ready to go with their retro. Those are the things that people don't see behind the scenes that really make our district special. And I don't think they always get enough credit because they're never on the front line and they're not on the TV. But I have to tell you, Joe will tell you every day, they're two brilliant women who really have stepped up and showed a lot of leadership in our business office recently, so I just want to commend them personally to the public because they don't get any recognition ever, so.
And Emma had a challenging year as the first.
Yeah, first year, she had a lot of building responsibility here and that is, yes, and we've had a lot of Title IX investigations, so Jenny Sullivan's been consumed with Title IX, the top of it's just been a year. It's just been a year. So I just want to thank the admin team that I work with, you guys, as I tell you all the time.
All right.
You're pretty amazing.
Anybody have anything else before we move on? Your job is good? Yes, sir. I just want to check. I don't want you to get left out. What do you want? All right. Action items, you got one and then I got one.
Yes, easy. Move to approve the consent agenda as listed, recommended. So moved.
All right, can I, can I get a show of hands to accept the consent agenda? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven, or sorry, yes, seven zero zero now. And I'm going to have, I'm going to read this one because I think it's a little little difficult for the superintendent to do this, but move to accept the agreement between the South of Collins Granville Regional School Committee and Superintendent Schools Jennifer Willard for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, recommended.
So moved.
All right, just to remind everybody and, and the people that are listening on, I actually was, through this whole challenge that we were running in from the, from the business office side, Superintendent Willard approached me and said, look, I'm looking to stay on another five years. I would really like to finish my career here at the district. Is there a way that the school committee could look at and just extend or put on a five-year contract or legally allowed to do that? Obviously, we discussed this as a group with all of the challenges that some districts are having with finding superintendents. I thought that this was a no-brainer, everybody agreed with us. So what we've done is we, essentially, this is the exact same contract that we approved last year, other than we moved it up to where it starts in June one of this year, all the way to two thousand twenty-eight. We kept the same three percent increase, no changes to sick time, vacation time, the longevity bonus we had already agreed to and put into the contract last time, so that's already set, ready to go. This basically just indicates that it supersedes the current contract that was in effect between the parties, it's going to go into effect in June one. And we've locked in our superintendent. So does anybody have any comments, questions? Concerns? Okay, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. What did he do? Wait. Kind of hesitate over there?
No, I would like to be out of.
Let the record show it's seven, it's six zero zero with one really, really excited member. People always have like a different category for that one. All right, so what's the record? Go back to, what's the record?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-seven, don't accept.
We're close. All right. Say it. Move for both. Okay, Superintendent Willard, do you have a report for us?
I'm super quick. I think I shared a little bit last time, I couldn't remember. I told you that the House budget was coming out. I just want to let you know that the House budget did come out, and I just want to remind the public and everybody here and I CC'd Chairman Stevenson on an email I sent to Representative Baldiga to make sure that when it was in the House that they maintained that per pupil went from thirty dollars a student to sixty dollars a student, the House went up to sixty dollars. So now we have to make sure when it goes into the Senate that we advocate, I think it's Paul Mark.
Paul Mark.
Paul Mark, he's our new Senator, so I'm going to send an email to him similar to what I said to Representative Baldiga, about making sure that we keep it at sixty. I'd even love to see it at a hundred per pupil. That they did put a hundred million dollars in for extraordinary relief because of the fourteen percent special ed cost for next year. Right now, they're doing it at a ten percent mark. It's still up in the air how the final language is going to come out, but we may get some additional money to help offset the increase to our special ed out of district tuitions. The exciting, exciting, exciting one is regional transportation for the first time in Navy in history was funded at a hundred percent. That is a huge impact on our districts. A huge impact. If you look at the cherry sheet, when the cherry sheet came out, it was like seven twenty-three, I upped it to eight hundred with my fingers crossed. If it stays at a hundred, it can go up to like a little over nine hundred thousand, so that helps us tremendously. The other one was, and I thought I heard it correctly, Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Chmel and I were both on a webinar. And there's two bills that are out there right now. One is, I believe that they're trying to say Section fifteen, they want to make school lunches free. And then they want to eliminate the language, Section seventeen, that makes school districts go active, families who have unpaid food balances. So they're really pushing for this universal free lunch to just become, I don't know if it's a law or what it is, but that came up in the meeting. And, and then the rural school aid, again, they had it at seven point five million in the governor's budget. In the House budget, it went up to ten million. So that has another direct impact on our regional school districts. I did fill out a survey today saying that this is all great, but by the time we have to build our budgets, and I understand it's the political game, the governor's going to come in, the House wants to make it look like they're doing a little something for the voting constituents, then the Senate's going to come in, they're going to do something a little bit more for the voting constituents, and then we get our final budget. I get all of that, but it makes it very difficult for a lot of the regional school districts who don't operate like a municipality whose budgets don't have to be done until June thirtieth. They can kind of wait for the state budget to come out to finalize it. We can't. So it's kind of like a guessing game. We do what the best that we can, which is why I felt a little comfortable upping the transportation with fingers crossed in previous years. But, so that's where we are right now with the House budget, and it is now going to the Senate, and it's they are going to have it out by next Friday, next Friday. They hope to have the next budget out. So.
So will this impact any for town meeting? Will you be changing any numbers for town meeting or we just don't? We can't yet.
We can't at all because
We've already proved it.
We've already proved it, one, and two, this is just theirs. This could go to the Senate, and the Senate was like, nah, we don't want to do sixty, we're going to go back down to thirty.
Right.
You may have funded it at a hundred percent, we're going down. So these are definitive numbers right now. Nothing is definitive until the governor's budget is signed in July.
Okay.
So it keeps just going through all these changes. And it's, it's just really hard for regional school districts because we have to have our budgets done so early. So.
The nice thing will be, is that, let's say for argument's sake, we get an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's fine. It's, all it will do is it'll go in E and D. And therefore, next year, we'll have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra in E and D that we would, that we didn't think we were going to have, which will allow us to offset cost of the town next year. So any sort of adjustments to the positive or negative that we get compared to what we've locked in and what we've approved from a school committee perspective and what actually happens is going to get adjusted in the E and D value. Is gonna get adjusted in the E and D value, so. The towns will always get a negative or a positive to that the following year.
Mm-hmm.
So it won't affect anybody's.
Not this year, no, not for this year, but it will, but it will affect next year, and we've got. I mean, even Jenny's presentation that she gave last meeting or the meeting before about the grants, if there's an extra. Hundred or some thousand that we get from that, that we that we can offset some of those teachers, teacher salary that are right now in. E C R three, that extra money will go, it'll end up ending up in E and D, so it's. It, that's all good stuff, cuz I mean, that's where, and if we manage the budget well. Any extra goes into that E and D, and that's why we've been able to consistently year over year put in. Eight to nine hundred thousand dollars in there to offset that cost of the towns. All right.
Oh, and extraordinary relief, I believe, is really going to districts that are in a whole harmless.
Um, well, that would make sense.
Right. Because we don't have.
Right.
So. Thank your representatives.
Mr. Trumell.
We had a meeting with uh Mr. Amato around the athletic master plan, and he gave us some homework to do, um. You know, programmatic questionnaire that. I'm gonna need some, some help on, um. Um, members of committee, maybe parking rack a little bit as well.
Okay.
Take a look at how we use the fields, how often we use the fields, who uses the fields. Um, charges, fees, things of that nature. So we had a good meeting a month ago, early April. That's why I can't have provided him with all the schematics and. The oversights of. Here in two, while the parks up.
Okay.
He has everything he needs, um, so this information will be helpful for him in his report.
Anything else? Figure it across for next week?
Yeah.
Well, two, two, and then the week after, we got another one. Okay, uh, fantastic, subcommittees. Negotiations, we got nothing, right? Finance, we'll know more next week. Um, P back.
Oh, lots of stuff going on.
They hired that, they hired a.
No. Not even met that place in time yet. There's like five thousand steps we have to go through. Um, but the teachers, I think I mentioned the teachers unionized over there, and now negotiations are happening. Um.
They were none, they were, they weren't unionized.
Wow. But Roland is kind of. Blustered with them because they came back in their first negotiations with an eight, eight, eight. Increase.
Be awesome.
Yeah. But you gotta understand that it's hard in that school because a lot of their teachers don't have degrees at all, not even bachelor's degrees. The teachers that run the um. Polinari, or you know, some of them have certifications, but it's hard to give them. Steps because they don't have like a master's degree plus thirty or a bachelor's degree, you know, plus whatever.
So that makes it less.
And now it's hard for them. Because they're unionized, so now the teachers are paying more in dues than what they're gonna get in increases.
That probably would have been something to think about when we're re-voting again.
Yeah, so they're, they're in a place over there, but the school buses will be leaving Woodland parking lot the last day of school. They don't know where they're gonna put them, but they said we'll park them in the parking lot at C Tech. And the reason why they want them out of there is because of the in-ground gas tank that's over there, they don't want anything to do with that.
Now, can I ask, we recently, over April vacation, I believe, received. Letters about bus route changes. Um, what was the reason for that, or is it a driver shortage?
No. They were done with four hundred years too, yeah, one thousand percent, they have no drivers, um. They did, LPVAC did purchase. Twenty-eight of the chargers for the new electric buses that are coming. Um, we're not getting any of them, I think they got ten of them and they're putting them in the bigger cities. Um.
So we bought electric chargers for buses that we're now not getting?
Well, this.
LPVAC is getting them, we are not south with, there's not, we're getting.
Can you imagine an electric bus in Tallinn or Grandville or? Saturday, but but the chargers that they did, yeah, but maybe they'll go down, they'll pass really fast. Um.
Well, they'll be charging on them down.
Yeah, that's true, the. They're really, they're like, they're like three, three thousand pounds or something like that, they're really heavy.
You should have solar on it.
Erica, does they talk to you about that?
Yeah.
About the electricity?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So they, the chargers that they bought are actually, I think it's called G and E, so or E and B, so it's two letters, I don't remember what it is. But um while the buses are plugged in during the summer, they're actually charging the chargers. And so, I'm sorry, the chargers are, the electricity that's in the bus is just. Um, sitting there, so they're actually gonna pull it out of the chargers and sell it back to.
Yeah.
Um, the electric company, so that's actually going to be, and that cost that is offset will actually come back to the districts too. Where are those electric chargers, charging stations and buses, how, in which of their uh garages?
Uh, I don't remember. It's the bigger ones, it's like, no, it's West Springfield, um, Wilbraham. Uh, Agawam, yeah, yeah, um. I can't remember.
I think that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you said that this, the Southwood buses are gonna be moved out of Woodland, are they still keeping the Granville and Tallinn buses up where?
Yes, yeah, in the park. Yeah, and they're just gonna be legitimately parked cuz the this, the place in Agawam isn't ready yet. Um, but they just want them out of there because I think we had like a three-year thing and a hundred percent of them.
Yeah.
Anything goes wrong with them.
Yeah, and that's why they want them out there because of that gas tank that's.
This is an Indiana Colts type move, I think, for a Baltimore Colts game, they're getting them.
Yeah.
It's for one night, the great big line of buses are all gonna go.
But we actually are just back in person now, so this is the first time that I actually got to meet everybody else on the. On the board, and I actually went to C Tech and each one of the um, I had dinner there and it was so good, yeah. And each one of the um. The shops came, the the teachers and some students came in and they did like a little.
It was awesome, that's always cool, they do that, and that's really cool.
It was really cool.
Return.
Yeah, finally. Um, but it was weird to see everybody in person, I'm like, oh, you're tall. And you're thin.
All right, I've got nothing on the corporation, we'll have a meeting here soon. Um, policy, we are, when's our next meeting?
Twenty, twenty, it was.
Something at day, right?
But then I think they got moved to the twenty-third.
Five twenty-three. Is that four, I'm assuming? And we're doing. E and F, B, E and F, right?
Yeah.
So we need. Aaron, can we please, at the next meeting? Can we please have section E and F of the policy? Sent out to the sub, the uh school committee members for like the first readings, okay, awesome, thank you.
And I believe that meeting is also on the twenty-third. I believe our next school committee is also on the twenty-third as well as that policy sub. And is that a reorg meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's a big meeting.
Who's up this year?
What do you mean? Eric and Ryan, they're running on a post, so I'm assuming we're not gonna have any changes, so.
But I hope, next week, the ninth.
Or you can, you can start, you can start voting as of yesterday. Just don't do what I did and not fill out your name on the thing, cuz I got a call late in the evening, so you forgot to fill out the outside sheet, so my my vote is now invalid. But I'll go back. Now, my, my, my eighteen-year-old, who's first time voting, she filled it out right, I did.
But my name and her name are right next to each other, but my name's underneath hers, so I bet you everybody's gonna vote for you.
No, it says vote twice.
I know, but I didn't even notice.
All you need is one.
That's what happened to Jonathan, I. Because I, one, even though.
Yeah.
I get by like four hundred and three votes.
Those people didn't realize. So I might not even be on the school board now, or does.
That's true.
I'm gonna vote, so you can, so, all you need is one. Um, all right, buildings and grounds, when are we, when are we gonna have another meeting?
We should do, we should have one soon to do this.
Okay, all right.
How did the last meeting go?
Worked out, I was.
That was good, I didn't make it.
Yeah, it was, well, Jeff, that, he summaries, that's what, that's what we did.
Yeah.
We went over that.
Did we schedule another one after that?
No.
No.
So Aaron's gonna work on locking us in with the meeting? Great, awesome. Um, I O T. Yeah, so. Wellness. Okay, sped. Do you have all the answers for all the? Technology, you're not on that.
No.
Nothing? Uh, capital, Mr. Joe, you got anything on your two capital committee master plan?
The capital is done and we'll know about that. Two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, master plan, we meet. I think next Thursday.
Okay. Athletics, we've got, obviously, we're waiting, we're moving, obviously, this thing here, but then with the committee, uh, we've got. The coaches that we're looking to try to hire. Um, anything else, Mr. Trumell, that I forgot?
Um. Trying to think last time we met with Marion.
One thing we, we've identified, we don't know the solution yet, we wanna try and. Figure out from a payment perspective, how the kids will be paying the money, right? We think that that needs to get looked at.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so.
Sure.
We're on it. Well, I ideally, I think if we could have like a school Venmo or something like that would be great, that way they could just.
Definitely needs to be a better communication system about that as well. Because it's pretty haphazard right now with regard to. Uh, who's in charge of that, who's communicating with the kids, who's collecting the money, all of that.
I know when um my kids played in Westfield, I would have to give the checks to the athletic director. We didn't give them to the coaches, the athletic director collected all the money, but. They also have a full-time clerical staff in Westfield who um. Took care of everything and organized everything, so, right? It's, it's a much bigger school, so it might need more support, but we, coaches did not touch money.
People identifying an issue that we need to address, so. Good news is, they know about it and are on it. Uh, legislative. Nothing other than, I believe there is a summer program, I don't know the date. Um, I went to it last summer, I thought it was very interesting, I would certainly be interested in going again. Um, but somebody else can certainly. Go to the, I think it's nice if everybody at some point does go to that November meeting. Uh, we can rotate through that one, but it is, it is, it's interesting to go. Um. All right, public comment, there's no, still nobody here, so we're through that, um, old business. New business. I will, at this point, while I'm close, Pam, we're only fifteen minutes off.
All right, yeah, nothing.
Can I get a motion to return?
So moved.
I get a show of hands to check that one down, Aaron, let the records go, the motion passes seven zero zero. Everybody have a fantastic evening, good night.
Thank you.